In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, had it with notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act, proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 8th, 2018. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the board of education offices. Ma'am to the county township clerk, advertising the county's son in Starlight during January 18th, 2018, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand your place.
... United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Mr. Bell-Sama.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Here.
Mr. Correll.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Sclera.
Here.
Ms. Shaden.
Here.
Mr. Carnesella.
Here.
Do we have any approval of the minutes, please?
Please.
Second.
All in paper?
Yes.
Any correspondence this evening?
No.
Okay, we're gonna start off with our first presentation, our only presentation. I would've sworn you were here last night, but I just called you.
Twice a year, twice a year.
The HIBs will self-assess, Mr. Bell. Thank you.
Three times a year.
Don't think that we don't want to hear, that too.
Second.
So as you write, twice a year, during the school year, in the fall and the spring, I conduct the presentation. However, at the end of the school year, July or August, I'm required, as president, I go into the rights, we got the presentation on our, on each school's self-assessment. As we've done since the beginning of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, each school has to self-assess their compliance with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. So this, this assessment is in regard to this past school year. The assessment has, has not changed. It's still based upon eight core elements which have indicators. We do receive a rubric, which was provided to us by the Department of Ed. There's a rating categories, which also provides, you need to provide documentation which substantiates your grade. In breaking it down, just to give you a little bit of, a little summary on each core element. Core element number one, there are five indicators. Do we establish, do we implement, do we assess our programs, approaches, and initiatives regarding HIV prevention? Did they prevent and address HIV, harassment, intimidation, and bullying? Did each schools, so each school's, school safety team, do they identify patterns of HIV as part of their school climate, part of their meetings, I'm sorry. Core element number two, we do have three indicators. Are the employees provided training? Any new staff members? I, I trained them myself. If I'm able to do it, one of the anti-bullying specialists were assisting, conducting the training. Does the training have food instruction or preventing HIV, are protected characteristics? Excuse me? Do we discuss HIV, the policy with our students? That required, according to the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, all students, so we're talking about K to 12 students, of course. Core element number three, five indicators, so we provide instruction on suicide prevention, on HIV prevention, on the anti-bullying specialist, or are they providing time for participation in in-service trainings? I actually meet with the anti-bullying specialist, we actually met eight times this past, this school year. We, we're in the process of putting together a program to educate all stakeholders on the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. It was a big, pretty big initiative, so we're gonna be continuing, continuing, continuing the, in development of the presentation beginning of the school year. And I will discuss it a little later, but there are, have been changes to the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, which that's another reason why we decided to postpone our presentation because we wanted to see what new, what's new to the policy, as well as what are there some revisions to the code. Core element number four, providing aid for re-instruction on preventing HIV, it's a part of our curriculum. Are we observing the Week of Respect, which was conducted in October, first week of October? Of course, anti-bullying specialists are appointed by the principals, they meet with me more than two times per year, as well as the school safety team, do they meet with the, do they, do they meet a minimum of twice a year? Core element number six, are we implementing our policy, our procedure for reporting HIV? Are we reporting new information from any prior HIV investigations? Core element number seven, now what is the procedure? Are we notifying parents? Are we completing the investigation within 10 school days of the written report? Are we preparing, preparing a written report on the findings of each investigation? Are those results provided to Dr. Blazer within the two school days? Core element number eight, what are our grades? Have we posted them on our school's homepage? Are we following the procedure for ensuring staff members reported, written and verbally, as per the, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights? So, before we go to school year 1718, one of the requirements as per the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is we provide, part of our school safety, part of our requirement is that we have to, in public, provide our grades from the last school year. The same, this same report was provided to the board last July. It took the board, the Department of Ed, some time to provide us with the official grades, as you can see, they were released on May 29th, which then I posted it within two school days on our district website. So, those are our grades from last year, which were presented this year, from 1617. This is our grade for this year. Not much has changed, the only thing that we've changed is, there have been, I believe, with Walker Middle School, core element number three, speaking through the school safety team, Mrs. Janace, she really wanted to focus on providing more training for the school safety team members. So instead of, last year we were at 13, this year we're at 12. I believe, as well as for Lincoln School, for the core element number one, this year, Lincoln and Spring Garden were at 14. Mrs. Tannell liked to improve on her programs, and so she, instead of having, I believe it was a 14, a 15 last year, she gave herself a 14 this year.
I just have a question on this.
Sure. You wanna go back?
That's fine.
Sure.
So, just, I just wanna understand, school grade, max 78, 75, those are good numbers? Or is that bad enough? Is that a bad enough?
I, I think out of a 78, I feel that's a pretty good number, yes. They were called, yes. Yeah, 78 is a max. Yes. So if you go from left to right, that is a total score for each school, then at the end of the, the state will then provide us with the, our total school grade. But it's, it's a self-assessment, yes.
I know the hiring rule is...
Yes. We always try to strive for a 78, which is extremely difficult, but that is the ultimate goal.
Joe, can you just do me, I know, and I know it's usually what you do in January when you talk about the program, but I do think out of all of the self-assessments, the middle school, you guys self-assess yourself fairly, harshly, I know part of that's that you wanted to increase professional development. Just wanna talk about any of the other components?
Well, it's, as well as self-assessing ourselves, I think that's one area which we'd like to work on, I believe we worked on, last year, one of our goals was to assess ourselves. This past school year, we provided a questionnaire to the staff regarding advisory, because a lot of our programs are run through the advisory, which are run twice a year. So I think one of our goals now is to assess, provide, to speak with the students about our advisory. That's where a lot of our, like I said, a lot of our education is through that. At the elementary level, you have lead, you have the school, the school casting curriculum, at the high school, they embedded and infuse it into their curriculum. Mrs. Selly also has the ambassadors, even have through, even through our, our athletic department, Mr. Pyro, through his athletic department, who conducting community service projects. And I know, I feel like I've said this before, but I'll repeat again, it's just not about HIV prevention, about building character, because if you build character, you reduce the likelihood of HIV.
So, so, the upshot, I just, the self-assessment helps you set your goals for next year?
Most definitely.
So that you know where you're working and...
Most definitely, yep.
And this is, I think, what's most important for everyone to know, and what I appreciate most, people are really honest. You know, of course, we want the 78, but we're gonna be honest about goal setting and what we wanna do. 71's not bad, but it has stayed out against the other schools, so I just wanted you to say you know that.
Yes. And one of the most difficult, I think, as, in speaking with all the anti-bullying specialists, one of the most difficult components of the whole Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is that things are constantly changing with our students. So as, you know, things are changing, our interventions are constantly changing, which require that our prevention efforts have to change. So, core element number one is always, I feel, is like the most difficult one, because it's always trying to keep up with what are, what's happening. Like the school safety team, they're always trying to identify patterns. So that is constantly changing, so it could be a challenge, but, you know, we try to work with it as best as we can.
That's right.
Talking about our HIV policy and procedures, like I said earlier, it's always reviewing, reassessing, as Dr. Blazer said. And once again, it's always about core element number one, I feel, is that the improvement of prevention and intervention efforts. As I said earlier, as of July 1st, went through, I went through training in May with Strauss S. May, the state is, for like I said earlier, they will be, well, I believe it's as of July 1st, they have added some new code, as well as some revisions, that went into effect as of July 1st. Part of the stress S. May's presentation was they are now providing school districts with their recommended policy until the Department of Ed provides them with a guidance to implement it. So I'm not sure, to my knowledge, it hasn't been provided yet. So I guess, I know there was a policy committee, I did speak to Mrs. Loconsolo and Mr. Bany about it, as well as that once we do receive that, and that's a discussion that we have to have, I believe, with our administrators, the board, our policy committee, along with the anti-bullying specialists. Once our self-assessment is approved, Dr. Blazer will go into our, into the SSDS system, I believe it's the School Safety Data System.
That was even updated this year.
Yes, that was, that was a surprise, this year that was updated as well. So it is, it's submitted, and then, usually in the past, we usually get our, we receive our grades in December, this year, like I said previously, we didn't, we did not receive them until May 29th. Once we receive them, they will be posted, and we'll be back here again next July.
We'll be happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And even though this is a compliance thing, you should know that, Joe, who's the anti-bullying specialist for the district, works with all of the school teams, we make sure that the principals and administrators keep getting the training, so we're consistent when we investigate these incidents, and we do follow the existing guidelines as far as notifying parents of whether, you know, their child was involved, or either is a victim or is an aggressor, and what the outcome of the investigation was. I don't, I know the board knows, I'm not sure the public knows, but if you look on the agendas, all of those are reflected on agendas. The board is made aware of each incident, each investigation, there's a first reading, there's an opportunity for families to appeal if they don't agree with the investigation, then of course, we, you know, certify that information. So it's really not just twice a year for Joe, it's an everyday kind of thing. So thank you so very much, thanks for being here.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a superintendent's report, Dr. Julie Blazer.
So, even though it's summer for most of you, it is busy as always here in the district. Chris, I'm glad to see you, retirement hasn't kept you away, thank you. The Let's Learn Program, one of the programs, we have the summer wrapped up on Friday with their showcase, always outstanding, and I have to say, you have continued to grow that program as a wonderful summer program, but through the lens of the district's strategic plan, I was so impressed with the STEAM and the robotics and some of the other new offerings, must've had five or six new offerings this summer. And to me, that was amazing, and the video, you know, is different showcase this year than what I saw last year in this, but I loved hearing what the kids liked about them, not just the new offerings, but everything. So, thanks for keeping upping the game, 'cause it could just be, you know, morning babysitting, and you may get enrichment every single time. So, truly, thank you. Take all of that. The other summer programs we have, right now, we have our Extended School Year Program for our special education students, continuing at Lincoln. We have housed in the district, the Parks and Rec Department is doing their program at Radcliffe School, and we also have an extended day camp that's happening at the high school. Each of those also have staffs that are here all day, working all summer. And again, for the working parents in town, for our students that need education throughout the school year, we're really pleased to be able to offer those opportunities in the summer. As you know, with the security issues and the need to really manage our building access, doing that in the summer with so many people takes the effort of everyone involved. And again, couldn't, couldn't thank everybody enough for making those programs so wonderful. So thank you for that. In addition to the programs, staffing is usually how we spend this first month of the summer, interviewing, hiring, and unfortunately, tonight, along with that, we have a new position to interview and hire for. I am excited, I promise I'm excited, but it's with great sadness that I tell you that our own Coach Kelly, after 20 years in Nutley, has announced his retirement from Nutley. I shed a couple of tears over that, I hope you will too, but it's good news, 'cause he's retiring from Nutley, but he's pursuing a passion and a dream, so that keeps me pretty excited for him. Coach Kelly will be joining Caldwell University and, as the head coach?
Head sprint football.
Head sprint football coach, and he's also gonna be in the athletic department, working with media relations. So you can't really beat that as an opportunity, and I, I've only worked with Mr. Kelly for two years, and I cry. He, he has made such an impact, and if you guys wanna talk to him, we're welcome to. He has made such an impact, not just on our athletic program, but on our, I'm gonna cry again, but on our media program. He works, I would say, you might be more around the clock than I am. He is at every Board of Education meeting, every commission meeting, planning zoning, he's with the students, just about everywhere. It, it is giving a huge loss for us, but again, you're a wonderful asset, and they are so very, very lucky to have you. And I guess the best thing, the thing that I know most of all, is that you're still in Nutley, guy, and I know I'll still see you, so I'm not saying goodbye, and I can't say good luck, 'cause you don't need good luck, but I'm gonna wish you all the best in your, in your next endeavor, in your next chapter. You will be truly, truly missed. I'm guessing that some other people wanna talk besides me, and if you can, so you can come in.
That's great. So, first off, congratulations. I've been around him through sports and programs a tremendous, tremendous amount of time. What he does with the media, the kids, you find a moving place anywhere, you're exactly right. I will tell you, it will not be easy shoes to fill with the amount of time and the amount of energy that you put into it. You're just a great all-around person, I don't think, and I've been in sports programs, I watch coaching softball and everything else with the girls and the parents, and you never even hear a parent say one thing bad while he's coaching. If you're on the sideline, especially at the girls' programs, 'cause my niece played for him, you never really hear that. So, you've been a great person, we're glad you're in our district, I'm glad my niece had you for softball, and good luck in the future. Congratulations.
Mr. President, Mr. Kelly and I go back far ways, and I, we watch each other, but I think what Dr. Blazer said, the influence that you have on our children is just phenomenal. You're always, there was a story not too long ago on TV about a music teacher, where the students came back and applauded him after so many years, and I know that there are children out there that are now adults, that feel the same way about you and the impact you've had on their lives, and I applaud you for that, and I congratulate you for moving forward.
Anyone else?
Good for everything they said, and I guess the hardest part is that you're trading your MSU Red Hawk for Caldwell. Because you're happy unhappy, and I wanna thank you for your services to the district, and obviously wish you luck, even if it's not.
I was gonna wait till the business, because I like to say a couple of things. You don't have to do all of this, Doctor.
We need a head sprint football coach, he's dressed up.
I know someone would let you ride, let you cover the vice. I laugh, if the kids will tell you, how do I come to school every day? You know what?
Goofy.
How do I come dressed?
Shirt and what?
Cackies.
Shirt and what, though?
Jacket.
Shirt and tie, every day. And I, of course, I always hoped model behavior, that my students would want, and this is the time we're not, that's the part of this.
We know this situation. The eyes we did, I had discussions with Dr. Blazer, and also with some of the administration at the high school, this has been a bittersweet moment for me, the last three weeks, really a whirlwind, and I look around the room, and you talk about years of education, you talk about impact, I have two former students from another district, from Clifton High School, that are here in the district, that are working here, Mr. Bany and Ms. Greco, who are part of my journey, and I look around, and I remember, Mr. Sclera, we had our first night game here, okay, and you were helping with the lights, not out by, 'cause there was a shadow, you worried about the lights, you were with the department. And we were putting the, the actual flooring down in a weight room of one of our ex-board members, the first, we never had a night football game, never had a weight room, these are things that I think about. Also, the board meetings, just for all you board members, I wanna thank all the board members presently, and the administrators presently, and the superintendent presently, but also the ones in the past that I've worked with, because they've been supportive of me as a, more impersonally, as a person, but also as a coach and a teacher, and I try to help my, hold myself to integrity, and realize the amount of things that I was building was because I was living off the enthusiasm of one of my students, but also of the community itself. This is a great community. Both of my daughters have graduated from here, one's gonna be a freshman at MSU, and one's a junior.
Go back.
And one's a junior at MSU, so I, their, their education journey here was fantastic, and the things that I bring with me, I have to laugh, we started videotaping these board meetings at Radcliffe School, and I'd have to sit on a Friday night, and you'll get a kick out of this, we had to use videotape, I would sit, kick a pop of tape there on a Friday night, get a slice of pizza, play, and then runs over, leave, and then it may be obviously now a little more automated, sometimes the automation doesn't work as well as we wanted to, but that's where we've come. All those experiences, whether they be in the classroom, or the athletic field, or in a campaign, all really go back to these people, okay, to my students, okay? The hardest part is, you know, this going on my new journey, which is actually a situation where I'm going to a higher learning institution, where I hope, but all those things that I built here, my fabric and my foundation are not gonna go away. This is who I am, okay? I live in Nutley, I come out and make a left turn, well, now I gotta make a right turn, I gotta go full Phil Avenue, so that's gonna be a little bit different, but who I am, and with these young people here today, hopefully, the relationships that I build with them, okay, and the amount of people on my cell phone for the last 20 years, okay, is something that I'll always keep with me, and like Dr. Blazer says, all roads lead through Nutley. I will tell you this, the first couple of people I met up in Caldwell, guess where they were from? They were from Nutley. And again, I look around this room, this is who I am, and I'll never forget that, I thank everyone for the opportunity, and I will be here, I will be here recruiting, and also looking to get young people into Caldwell University as student athletes, and more importantly, as students, and they can hopefully build on their educational journey. I wanna thank everyone for your support, thank you very much.
And just finally, not nearly as bittersweet, but last Thursday, no, last Tuesday, Tuesday, we did have our Board of Education retreat. During the retreat, we were able to come up with our proposed district and board goals for the next year. We are using the strategic plan to be able to frame those, and at the August 27th board meeting, you're gonna see a presentation from our administrative leadership team on the strategic plan for the next five years, and with that, hopefully, we'll be voting on the district and board goals to support that.
And Mr. Kelly, just real quick, I need to get an opportunity to say thank you for all of your time here. You seem to pop up everywhere, which is just wonderful, and I know that you're certainly gonna be missed here, and I know that you're following your passion here, following your dream, thank you for the time that you've spent here, and I hope that you find everything and get everything that you need moving forward with where you are. All right, let's see, who we have next up is our board secretary.
Sorry. Just a few highlights from tonight's agenda, you will see a couple of pages of transfers, those transfers always happen at year end, and they are required to make sure that all of our accounts and financial statements are in balance. There's also continuing resolutions for renewals of educational software licenses, the district's website, AppleTrack, which is our recruiting software, Microsoft and Adobe licenses, and the renewal of the athletic student accident insurance. Just a few clarifications on resolution number 19, this is for the MySchoolBucks, which is the platform where parents can go on and put money onto their student's lunch accounts, and it also covers the NutriKid system, so that's how we track all of the lunches for your reduced applications and the reporting to escape. Resolution number 20, I need to modify it to read as follows, if there is a typo there, it should say that it is to approve the contract from JAMF for the management of IPAD and Mac computers throughout the district for 2018-19. Resolution number 22, we participate in a co-op sponsored by Jet Data, they do bidding and for all different types of supplies, most of our classroom supplies are purchased through there, health supplies, athletic supplies, and they also issue purchase orders for us. We start working with the teachers in February to put in their orders, they then go out and do all the bids for several hundred school districts, and then they will issue all those purchase orders for us, which saves us a tremendous amount of work for both the secretaries in the schools, as well as everyone in the business office. We participate in that with Essex Regional, we've split the fee with them, which saves us 50% on not the annual cost. In terms of facilities, our maintenance staff is transforming the former Washington School Office into instructional space, we're beginning to create the secure entrance here at the middle school, as well as creating an additional instructional space.
an additional instructional space at Radcliffe School for our expanded ABA program. We recently had a water leak in the high school, so that's a major repair of a water pipe that goes down the length of the main corridor. That work is also being done by our maintenance staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jamons. Okay, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Mr. Valsama, would you take academic, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on July 18th. Dr. Leggero presented proposed contracts for professional learning for teachers, of English language learners. As a result of program reviewing and staff surveys, they appear on tonight's agenda. Dr. Blazer reported on meetings regarding safety and security, the strategic plan, and with the medical center regarding opportunities for our students. The committee also discussed the current reregistration for all students currently in grade six and 10. The committee also discussed progress towards changes in the extended day program. Reregistration and enrichment classes will be implemented for September. Mrs. Loconso, Mr. Bainia reviewed future professional development requests, and Dr. Blazer reviewed personnel and legal updates.
Thank you, Mr. Valsama. We'll move over to admin, Mr. Kaczynski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The admin committee met on July 16th, where Dr. Blazer reviewed the safety and security meetings held July 11th. Mr. Concello, Mr. Nicoletti, Mr. Bimaeston, Mrs. Moore, all attendants. The timeline was updated and future items were discussed. Job descriptions for school, job descriptions for school, safety officer, and school monitor were discussed. The next meeting and security meeting will be held Monday, July 30th at 10:00 a.m. Dr. Blazer gave us an update on the strategic plan. The overarching goals will be used to set the district and BOE goals. The committee discussed the current reregistration for all students currently in grade six and 10. Our hearing was held earlier this evening, and a resolution to disenroll those who have not completed the process is on the BOE agenda tonight. In moment numbers continue to grow in general in special education. Currently, a fifth grade was collapsed and an extra section of kindergarten was added at Spring Garden. Radcliffe Kindergartens are closed with class sizes above 20. Dr. Blazer is evaluating to determine where classes can be collapsed and teachers redeployed. The progress on interviews and the decision in hiring a new coordinator of integrated technology was discussed. Additionally, job descriptions for school counseling, security, and register were discussed. Dates for negotiations with the Educational Association of Nutley were discussed. Dr. Blazer provided an update on personnel and legal issues. Our next administration committee will be on Monday, August 12th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. We're going to move over to finance. Ms. Russo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met on July 17th. Mr. Nicoletti provided an update on the Washington School entrance project and reviewed the change order on tonight's agenda. He reviewed the estimates for replacing the boiler at Radcliffe School. He also updated the committee on the summer projects, including the conversion of the existing main office area at Washington School to instructional space, creating a new classroom at Radcliffe School, and repairing a water pipe at the high school. Ms. Jamons reviewed the 1718 budget and projected end-of-year financial status. Committee reviewed the July 23rd finance resolutions, including the renewal of the athletic student accident policy and contractor payment for the Washington School project. Mr. Marmore explained the year-end budgetary transfers. Thank you. Next meeting is Tuesday, August 21st. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. We're going to move over to policy now, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The policy committee met on July 18th, in attendance, Dr. Blazer, Ken Banyan, Jean Loconso, Sal Valsama, Lisa Danchek-Martin, and myself. Kent and Jean updated the committee on the 4,000, 5,000 series policies being reviewed by staff and administrators with the policy committee. The policy committee discussed future agenda topics and use of Google Docs for review of policies. Jojo Iar joined the meeting with the policy committee to update them on policies affecting Chromebooks and insurance of some. Policy committee reviewed and finalized policies for first and second reading that you'll see on tonight's agenda. Policy committee reviewed and finalized attendance policies that will be on for first reading at the August 27th meeting, since they were left off tonight's agenda. And the policy committee reviewed policies to be reviewed in August and September. Our next meeting is August 15th.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our four regulations, six of one, allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. All, please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign your visitor's accusa before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Okay, see you none next. Mr. Valsama, would you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to, academic resolutions, one through six, is ready?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Danchek-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Concello?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski, would you take administration, please, and with the walk-on resolution as well for disenrolling people?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move administration resolutions, one is two, and three is additional one we added tonight. I will read administration resolution number three. Disenroling of pupils. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the disenrollment of eight students who were not domiciled in the township of Nutley as of July 23rd, 2018, and whose identification numbers are as follows, and they are listed. Be it further resolved that these students be removed from the Nutley Public School District as of July 24th, 2018, unless the students, parents, or guardians provide the superintendent of schools acceptable proof of domicile in the township of Nutley or appeal this decision to the Commissioner of Education pursuant to law. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education reserves the right to pursue and claim for tuition for any inauspicious periods of attendance. I so move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Danchek-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Adamantly yes, and I missed the point to thank our committee that did the work on Mr. Ferraro and his staff for the outstanding job they did. I know it was time-consuming, but certainly worked well to the taxpayers of Nutley. Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Concello?
Yes.
Ms. Russo, would you take finance, and would you just reference some resolutions for the donations, just to recognize those donors?
Sure.
The resolution number seven.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move finance resolutions, one through 32, as listed, especially number seven. Be resolved, the Board of Education, of the following donations. Donation from Mr. Robert Marks into Nutley High School, two times. $5,000 donation from Antico School PTO. $1,800 from Antico PTO. $4,560 from Washington School PTO. $2,331 from Walker Middle School PTO. $358.95 from NEF Learning Trade for Spelling City membership and classroom license math for one year. I so move.
Certainly.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Danchek-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes, one through 31, no as to 32.
Mr. Concello?
Yes.
Mr. Klein, would you take personnel and also read testimony?
Mr. President, I move personnel resolution one and two, with number two acknowledging Mr. Kelly's testimonial, whereas Mr. James Kelly has tendered his resignation as career technical education teacher, effective June 3rd, 2018, and is signified as a detective of retirement from active service, and whereas Mr. Kelly has worked in other public schools for a period of 20 years, and whereas through the years, Mr. Kelly is exemplified as finest quality of a teaching profession at all times. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. Kelly its deep appreciation for his long and faithful service and extends to him its best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made for the minutes of this meeting.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Danchek-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Concello?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman, would you take policy, please?
Mr. President, I move policy resolution one and two.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Valsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Danchek-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Concello?
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters, our regulation allowance, third and last few communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within the limit requirement. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign your visitor's accusa before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Hi, Chris Osidja, 61 Grand Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. I wanted to take home to say thank you for your support for the Life Public program. We had 23 classes, about 189 students, and a lot of fun. So thank you for your support. From when it starts in January, first meeting with Dr. Blazer, meeting with Mrs. Jamons, meeting with Mr. Nicoletti, and then having your support is so important to making it easy for me to run the program. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be addressed to the board? Okay, any old business to come before the board? Any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, if I could. I was privileged to stop by and see the Police Academy week of training that Mike Fadilla was doing with our students over at Spring Garden School. There were 50-some odd students, it was a phenomenal debt, a week. There was a phenomenal process that was going on. Not only were the children enjoying it and learning, but having our seniors come back that had been in the program and act as mentors for the children was a credit, and I would, it was a great job, and I was glad I was able to stop by.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski.
All right, one more thing, if I could.
Sure.
I want to see that list next time.
Just another, thank Mr. Concello and I were able to stop by Washington School to see the progress on the new addition to the front of the building. Outstanding. I think the way the project is progressing, the, in my opinion, the exterior of the school seems to blend right in and doesn't look like an add-on, and I think it was a great job, and I'm looking forward to it in progress.
I agree. They did an amazing job at Washington. It's definitely a new look, it's going to be a great add, so we created a little bit of space that's definitely needed across the district. Anyone else with any new business to the board? Okay, whereas Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 1004-1. Now, we will be resolved, Board of Education recessed the closed executive session, and it's time to discuss student matters, personnel, property acquisition. Be it further resolved, the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of assessment meeting of the Board of Education, where the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Do we have a motion to go on to close?
Close.
Fall in favor. Thank you, everyone.